Intend to make any more of a speech than that. Thank you.
Start with whoever wants to go first.
I'll be getting, I'll go first. I'm Marsha Aikens on Sixth from Market Street. I don't want to see no more trees planted there. I think that it's time the Saint Jen moved forward into the 20th century. I think we need places for people to sit down, visitors, residents to sit. If we could put some benches in. I don't see where that is a big expenses, the trees that keeps causing problems after problems and the liability of it. I'd also like to see that we spend the money toward putting in some ramps in these businesses and the restaurants where the disability people that visits our town and to get it out there that we've got these ramps in and will have more people in disabilities with wheelchairs than walkers that can get into the businesses. I mean, when was the last time you ever seen a person with a wheelchair or walker? When was the last time that a resident could take their family member out of a nursing home to take them down to the old brick or the Ambo like they did when you was little and a kid growing up? You never see that. We need quit worrying about what the other towns and their beautifications is what Saint Jen, we need to move forward. This is the 20th century. If they want the flowers, go down there and visit their flowers. If they want the trees, visit their trees. But I think it's time for Saint Jen to start moving forward and quit worrying about what the other towns has to beautify their towns. Let's start giving back to the public.
We've got the Kettig, Oak Kettig Building down here on Market Street, 360 Market Street. And we're getting a lot of seep water in the basement of that building now that we never did get before. I mean, you know, we just get a little bit of wet wall or a little puddle there if you got a lot of rain. But the other last, I don't know, it was three or four weeks ago when we had three days of rain. I had probably two inches deep of water and probably 30 by 50 area in that basement. And it's all coming in that front wall and we never did have this problem before.
Right. The fact that part of the sidewalk had been raised up.
Right. It's raised up so you're trapping water between the curb in the building and it's going someplace. Well, you know, if your sidewalk's up that far, you know, you've got a gap under there someplace that deep. So that water's going someplace. I can't deal with that much moisture in there and you know, we'll end up having mold problem and everything else. And whenever, if they put trees back in, I don't want any there in front of that building. If, I don't know, I don't know if any of these other buildings got basements in them or not, but I've got a problem over there now.
Years ago? No. No. Oh, yeah, like I said, you might, the wall might get wet, you might get a little puddle
there, but nothing like we've been getting there. Even Sunday night when we had what inch and a half or whatever, inch and a half. There were still probably a 10 by 12 area that had a new puddle in it. It's just water we never did have before down there. I just don't want to see any trees out in front of that building anymore. There's anything I can do about it.
I'm Tom Nelke. I'm the utility forester for Citizens Electric, utility forester assistant. I'm just here to express their interest. Obviously sidewalk, not quite our issue, but we just want to express concern with tall growing vegetation underneath our utility right of ways. So just something to keep in mind that we strongly discourage anything extremely tall or fast growing under our wires.
One of the things the literature talks about is when trees are planted that do interfere or conflict with utility lines, that the utility then tends to try and cut them to make sure that they don't make contact with each other. And you end up with what they call lollipop trees, which is a tree that looks like somebody took a bite out of it.
Yeah, or slingshot.
That apparently is not, we don't have any lollipop trees.
We try not to. We try to encourage our trimmers to do lateral directional pruning, which is you take the branch and you trim it back to a secondary branch, which will take that dominant role, which more or less steers the main growth of the tree away from the wires. So a lot of these smaller trees out here, you know, a lot of times we'll have three-phase lines that are on 15-foot crossarms. By the time it comes, they get up to our wires are not quite wide enough to, you know, make a cup out of them or scoop out of them. It's just a full-blown flat top on them just because that's 15 feet from our wires and that's what it boils down to. Some bigger trees, you know, that are in our, if our wires are taller and the tree fans out enough, sometimes we will get some that go out and around and stuff like that. It's all depends on the situation. Our kind of motto is the right tree in the right place. So I think most people would agree with that in this whole issue.
I think everybody agrees with the statement. I'm not sure everybody agrees what's right.
Exactly. But yeah, I just wanted to more or less put in citizens' input on the situation. So if, and also as a resource, feel free to ask me any questions as more comes up.
If we were to put together a group of people with more knowledge than city administrators have to look at this, would you be available to participate in such a group?
Yeah, I'd be more than willing to. You know, I live in Lake Forest, so I'm not far away. You can guys call me whenever you need me. I got a forester degree and I'm certified arborist, so you know, I can help a little bit.
My name is Joanne Schrempf and we live on South Fourth Street. And I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is what happened to the trees on Market Street near Fourth on Monday? I saw people from the city working on them and frankly, they looked terrible, but I'm wondering what the purpose of that was.
The last meeting of the Board of Aldermen, we directed to remove those trees and repair the sidewalk because that is an area where we had a particular problem with people tripping and being injured. So without talking about the entire downtown area, those particular trees were considered ones that we need to remove.
So do I understand you that you're saying that they will eventually be taken all the way down?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we, we got what we could safely with our equipment. Citizens is going to come back and take care of that portion of the trees that's entangled in the power line, so then we can remove the balance.
Okay. And the second question I have is, I would assume that the city is responsible for trees and sidewalks within the historic district. Is that, would that be correct?
That isn't totally clear.
Okay.
The property owner has responsibility for their property and maybe the sidewalks. We are advised by legal counsel that the city always shares some responsibility. There's no, it's all on the property owner or it's all on the city, but that, the, so there's kind of always a role for the city in it, but the fact that the city's involved doesn't mean that the property owner might also have responsibility depending on how an injured party might pursue it.
Okay. That would bring on my next question, and that would be not necessarily the trees and the sidewalks in the downtown area, but the sidewalks on South Fourth Street. I, I remember that when we lived in, in St. Louis County, the homeowner was responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalks. And if something happened to the sidewalk, a tree root went up, uprooted the sidewalk, you were responsible for repairing that. And I'm wondering if you say that, is that, are you saying that the homeowner outside of that downtown area would be responsible, somewhat responsible for their sidewalks?
Yes. The code says that the property owner in a residential area is responsible for their sidewalks and the city will contribute to its maintenance up to a certain dollar amount. So if you wanted to replace your sidewalk, then you could come to the city and request our participation at $350, $3.50 a foot.
Okay. We've been and we've owned our home for 10 years now and have walked downtown many, many times. And in that length of time, the sidewalk has not gotten any better. It's gotten far worse. And we have young grandchildren that come visit us and family that comes visit, visit us. And I particularly remember last year at Jour de Fête, we walked downtown and we had a two-child stroller and it was impossible to walk that sidewalk to get to the Jour de Fête. And it's not a very safe thing to, to push a stroller into the street so that you have a somewhat even platform to move that stroller or just to walk yourself. And I'm wondering, since like I said, we've owned our home for 10 years here and nothing's been done, what's it going to take? How many more years will it be before the city and the homeowner take responsibility? Have the homeowners been notified that they need to do something if the city could help them? Has that ever been done?
I can't, that ever precedes my involvement, so I can't, I can't answer that question. Not in the last two years.
Mayor Grimminger, do you know whether or not?
I know in some cases we probably have if it's been, but, but not in, not in this particular case that you're talking about.
So what's it going to take? Mr. Stupi fell last week and, and Mrs. Bosler fell a few months ago. What's it going to take for something to be done? Someone getting really, really injured, a lawsuit, someone, a child getting hit because they can't walk on the sidewalk or you can't push them in a stroller or pull them in a wagon? What's it going to take?
We can certainly look into it and see what, see what issues that we've got to deal with, with the homeowners. I, I know that really it's down to his money, either the homeowner or the city. But I know that doesn't, that doesn't make an excuse for people that's fallen and gotten hurt, but I, we'll see what we can do.
Well, you know, what, is it going to be a matter of the city and the homeowner contributing in a case of one homeowner? But I'm just boiling it down to one homeowner. It can be a half a dozen homeowners. That they, that the city and the homeowner do what they need to do, contribute the money they need to, to repair the sidewalk, or someday somebody suing the city and the homeowner for, you know, multiple, multiple thousands of dollars? What's it gonna, I mean, we're, what's it gonna take?
Well, money. Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that, the one, there's one sidewalk there that I walked, that sidewalk that needed to be replaced 40 years ago. And, and it's been like that and nothing has happened.
Right. And then Mary, Mayor Grimminger, that's the point. You said, we'll see what we can do. Well, I would imagine that people have been saying, we'll see what we can do in the last 40 years.
And there's, as far as the city's part of it goes, I guess there's always been priorities as far as money goes needed to be spent somewhere else. Sure, we would like to. We're trying to save money right now with Special Road District. At least my priority would be, that's the one stretch of road that I'd like to do and put curbs on one side where that drainage could be on the farm side of the field and get that issue taken care of and replace those sidewalks on the other side. But it's going to take a while to be able to accumulate that money at the, at the way we're going. And looking at our budget, the priority certainly has been made for next year of what streets we want to do, but that's one of them that's quickly rising to the top of the list.
I would hope so.
So how long have you been mayor?
10 years, 11 years.
And if it's been like that for 40 years and you've been mayor for 10 years, you haven't had the money in 10 years to fix it?
But we just got done with, okay. But, all right. But I, I mean, you can look at Market Street and we waited for that for four years and look at that sidewalk. That sidewalk was worse than that one. You could go all around town and find sidewalks that are actually worse than the one you're talking about, going down Third Street Hill right there. That sidewalk is, is a mess. So which ones do you pick, I guess? It's, it's, it's a big problem that we've got. We can't fix, we can't fix all of them, obviously, with the money that we've got. We've tried to take the priorities and the board to decide which ones we can do. Do we, and we're certainly facing the downtown sidewalks right now, and they weren't budgeted this year. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to fix those. So it, I'm sorry, but you know, it certainly gets down to money.
And then getting the homeowner to cooperate or share.
And to get the, you know, and to get the homeowner to cooperate.
I don't think that that should even be an option. The homeowner would need, if the, if the sidewalk is in front of their house, the, I don't think they would need to have, they should have a choice. They should cooperate with the city to fix it. They walk down that street themselves or their children and grandchildren walk down that street. I think there needs to be something that would force the hand.
Have you ever been in towns where you've walked down the block, some of the houses have sidewalks and some don't?
Well, we have that right on South Fourth, Ted.
Yes, we do.
You know, people have to cross over the street.
Why is that?
I have no idea.
The homeowner doesn't want to spend the money for a sidewalk.
Well, if the sidewalk is in place.
Sidewalks in every neighborhood.
Or a sidewalk may not be required.
But if the sidewalk is in place, it should be maintained, just as your home is maintained, your, everything else.
I agree, but some homeowners don't want to spend the money on a sidewalk.
Some cities don't want to spend the money on a sidewalk either. St. Genevieve being one of them.
First of all, we're getting way off the subject here, I think, because we're really, we're supposed to be talking about downtown trees. We evolved a little bit to talking about sidewalks in general.
Well, I mean, the trees are the cause of a lot of the problems with the sidewalks.
They sure are. And, and again, I, because to say that the city is not concerned about sidewalks is definitely not a truth. I think the city is concerned about sidewalks as they're considered, as they're concerned with every priority that we've got, with the amount of money that we've got to spend and decide to spend it the best way we can. That's what it gets down to. So I appreciate your comments and I don't have, this time I don't have a good answer.
Well, you see what you can do, please. Thank you.
Evening. I'm Frank Myers. I live out on North Main Street. I'm pleased that you're having this discussion this evening addressing the issue of the trees downtown. It's, it's a long overdue subject. I mean, it's been, the walks have been in something like 20 years. I think 87 probably, 88. They were necessary. I mean, at that time, you could go downtown and you, there were no walks. I moved here in 82 and that's my first reaction was going downtown and it was terrible. I mean, you could fall on any street you want to. I mean, the sidewalks were practically non-existent. The curbs were all broken pieces of stone. And the streets were potholes interlaced with a little bit of asphalt patching. There was no drainage. If you, the people that were here remember every big rain, Third Street basements would fill with water. There was no storm drainage, there was none of that. We got together, so some local, a small group of local people and I joined them. And with the help of Herb Ballard, who was a representative at that time, we got quite a sum of money from the River Roads Association to do repairs. Now, there were some restrictions on it. I mean, there had to be an improvement from a tourist standpoint because that's what the River Roads Association is about. So we designed and built the downtown, including the sidewalks and the landscaping. Now, trying to put landscaping in downtown raised some problems. First, the configuration of the streets and the sidewalks. They're ancient. I mean, they're late 18th century and they vary in width. All of them are a little bit too narrow, except Main Street is the only wider street in town. The sidewalks are, the buildings are right up, right up against the sidewalks. This generates a tremendous amount of heat in the summer and landscaping is frankly necessary. You had to have some trees down there. Now, the problems generated from a number of things. That configuration is one of them. The second one is, very frankly, we've made some, let's call them mistakes and poor choices in some of the landscaping that we did. We put in a lot of these little tree wells. We had to keep those, the pockets narrow, small because of width of the sidewalk and the requirements that what was left of the sidewalk had to be wide enough to get the wheelchair, get a wheelchair through. But the primary problem basically has been the lack of a timely maintenance program on those trees. It's just, I mean, you put the, you put trees in, in that type of a situation and you know that down the road 15, 20 years, you're going to have to have some replacement. In this case, you've done a great job in a, on Third Street. I mean, you went in there and that's one that we probably should have done when we put the project in, is build those tree wells bigger and put grates on them. It was money, frankly, trying to keep it down within the funds that were available. But you're correct that that, probably the biggest problem though is the species of trees that we picked. The red maples had a root system that did damage to the sidewalks. I mean, it just raised them. We've chose a lot of ash. The ash was a great street tree. However, it developed a blight of some sort, as you know, and they're not healthy. So what you have now is a problem that really needs to be addressed. And I don't think the solution to it is getting rid of the landscaping downtown. I think there's at least three ways to go. One is replace the trees with a more suitable species of tree, something that, and I'm not an expert, I can't tell you what that is, but with something that has a root system that doesn't destroy the sidewalk, has fast enough growth that you get some shade out of it somewhere in the next few years. And then, but the, a second thing to do is that, we tried this when we put the project together, is to get as many landowners as would do it, to let us put the trees back on the lawns rather than in the sidewalks. That way, we didn't have problems. Citizens Electric was a good example of that. We put in two nice bench sets with two nice trees behind them. Citizens Electric chopped them down. They probably had good reasons. I never could figure out what they were, but.
That's before my time.
I think it's just a natural hatred of trees, but it's electric. Anyway, but, and we were successful in some places. Next to the Senator Lynn house, between it and the stone building there, there's a nice little, two big trees, they're big trees now, they were small when we planted them, and a lot of shrubbery in there. And it's a nice, refreshing, little park-like. It blocks the view of some parking areas in the back that aren't that attractive and it doesn't damage the sidewalk. There's another one down next to the, oh, the church on, on Market. We put trees in there around. One of them is still there, the other one has been chopped down. That's, that's one other way we might get some relief from it. And if you could get the relief, and you can go along the streets, I can pick out a dozen spots where we should attempt to get non, get them placed on non-city-owned property and off the sidewalks. And if that's the case, if we could get it off the sidewalk, then we can do away with the tree well on the sidewalk. And the other is, one other thing is that there is room for removal of some of the poorly placed and really unneeded tree wells. There's a few there. You could probably pick out five to 10 that are not really needed. But it, all I'm saying is that I think what you need is a continuous, a good plan now. Don't make a spock judgment to chop everything down and start over again. Go at the thing intelligently, lay out a plan, put some timing to it, and then develop a good planned maintenance program so that you don't get into this situation again. If a tree's, it doesn't do a whole lot of good if you wait until the thing has already jacked the pavement up and, and people are tripping over it. You've got to take the action when you can see it just barely starting. And the action, and frankly, in those very small tree wells, is probably to just take them down and put another tree in. I thank you for your time and hope you'll consider some of the information useful. As I say, we put the project together 25 years, 20, 25 years ago, 82, 83. It's held up pretty doggone well, really. There are problems now. Those problems need to be addressed, but I hope they are not addressed to the extent of destroying what is there. I thank you very much. Any questions?
I think Frank would probably be willing, if we had a committee about the trees, you'd probably be available.
Sure. Sure. That's one thing Citizens Electric did do for us, as you do remember, Third Street used to be a mess of electric walk poles. We've got, we got agreement to put those all in back now that you get down there and there's not a whole line on the street. We wished we could have done that with the whole project, but the money wasn't available to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Beth Caldwell, I live downtown, and I own a business downtown as well. So, these trees are something I see every day, and my husband and I take a walk every evening after dinner. And I don't think I can say, I can tell you much more than Mr. Myers just did, he basically said everything I would want to say, but a lot more eloquently than I would have said it. Please don't get rid of the trees. Please, don't get rid of the trees. I understand that some of them are making the sidewalks dangerous, and it's unfortunate that we live in such a litigious society that someone just can't say, oops, I didn't watch where I walked. It's an old town, there's old things, there's broken things, but that's the charm of an old town. Totally think it's maintenance. Maintenance has to be done on these trees, they can't just sit there for twenty-five years with nothing being done to them. And all maintenance means money, but maybe something can be worked into the budget where every year you take so many trees or this certain block and you work on those. Maybe the next year you take a different block or a different number of trees spread out wherever and work on those. There's people much more knowledgeable about trees than I am. I don't know what kind of tree, but I'm sure somebody does. There's the extension office, we have botanists now in town, you know, people that know more about these things than I do, but just from being someone who lives and works downtown, walks around the downtown area all the time, please don't get rid of the trees. My husband and I went and visited a small town one time that had taken out all their trees and totally replaced their sidewalks, and they put nothing back. It was July, it was miserable. We did not stay for very long. There was a lot of shops I wanted to go to, but it was just too hot, too miserable, we had no shade, no place to stop, just for a minute in the shade and, you know, rest before we went on to another shop. North Main between Jefferson and Washington is beautiful. Those trees are nice, those metal grates in the ground are nice. They're not huge, but they do provide some shade. I don't know what kind of trees they are. I don't know what they're going to look like in twenty years, but probably ten years from now, some of them may have to be taken out, I don't know. But I think that's just part of it. I think if you take out the trees, you are discouraging people from hanging out and walking around and visiting the downtown area. Yes, sir?
One of the things that you discover when you're doing this research is that some shop owners don't want trees in front of their shops because they think it blocks the view of their storefronts. I've had one shop owner ask me to take down a tree for that reason. If you had a big tree in front of your store, people from seeing it, would you still enjoy it as much as you enjoy all the other trees?
I would actually love to have a big tree in front of my property that provided shade for the picnic tables that I have outside in front of my restaurant, because people don't sit out there because there's no shade right there. We have a big tree on the corner that sheds stuff. Sidewalk was yellow the garden walk weekend, but I have a broom, I sweep it up, we get it out of the way. I mean, that's just what you deal with. But I understand the viewpoint of blocking someone's shop, I get that, so. Thanks.
My name is Yvonne Lemire, I live on Main Street. I think all of you know me, and you all know that I am a tree hugger, because every tree I've lost in my yard, I've replaced. I'm also replacing trees all along my fenced area. I'm going to talk about the aesthetics. One of the reasons I moved from Clayton to St. Genevieve, I don't know if you've ever been to Clayton before, but every street in Clayton is lined, like they do in Europe, in France, in Italy. They line their streets with trees because, excuse me, we are going through a heat problem. It is very hot in this town. If you watch people walking on the streets and parking, everybody's clamoring to park underneath that, underneath that shade tree. This town is a historic town. The reason this town exists at this point is for people to come and visit your historic town. You want to invite them here, you don't want to have them run away from this town because, oh my goodness, it's not pretty. It's not cool. People love to stand under the trees, they love to be cool. I watch them. I'm on Main Street, I'm watching them. I watch tree, I watch people in front of the shops who want to stay cool under their trees. Trees are controlling, the shade is controlling electricity. I put trees on my front yard because I lost that great big huge maple tree that completely shaded the front of my house. I painted the front of my house five years ago, already the paint is peeling. Maintenance, trees help shade and maintain your homes and businesses. I understand that they, they sometimes hamper the sidewalks, and of course, you've already discussed that with the maintenance. I think I'm skipping around because I'm typically a woman. But, but for the most part, every town I've been in, and my husband and I traveled all up and down the Mississippi, we traveled to all of the historic towns. Some of them don't have sidewalks, some of them have broken sidewalks. I've fallen three times in my backyard, that's my fault, you know? I need to look down, and I'm at an age now where I need to watch where I'm walking. I think everybody needs to do that. We fall down, and that's what happened. Children fall down, my granddaughter falls down, she trips. I'm lucky, my sidewalks are okay in the front of my house. But, but these are things that I think need to be fixed, but I mean, put a sign up. If you have a problem with your sidewalk, put a sign up. Watch your step. You know, I'm seeing that all over town. I'm a tree lover. I love shade, I love the fact that the trees purify our air. We are in it, we are having a problem with the heat. We have global warning, warming, we are not going to run away from it, it's not going to disappear. I think that we need to help it and train our children, teach our schools, help, have them come out. Why can't the children come out and do projects of planting trees? I intend to talk to the school assistants about that. I don't know what else to say except that please don't cut the trees down. I asked last year if somebody would replace the tree in the front of my house, and they did, and I'm very grateful for it. I water that tree, I take care of that tree, I am now going to prune the bottom of it because I want to see that tree growing, so that when I park out front, I can park in shade and watch other people park in the shade as well. I don't think there's an argument about taking trees down. I think it's a sin, it's a moral sin to take trees down. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bob Mueller, and I live on Merchant Street, right next to the post office, and I'm also involved with tourism, and I echo a lot of the words that Yvonne said and Frank said about making the town inviting to, not only our town people, but the visitors that come, come to see us. When I was redoing my house, I happened to be living out of town, but my brother lived in town, and when I'd come back here to look to see how things were going, he, he always sat upstairs in the bedroom that kind of looked up Merchant Street. He always called it the quintessential view of St. Genevieve. And if you look on the, on the front of Bill Nagger's book, it's that view. Look how many trees are in that view. If you look at that now, the two trees that were in front of Citizens Electric are gone, they weren't on the sidewalk. The big maple that was in the yard at Felix Valley, gone, wasn't in, on the sidewalk. The big pecan tree behind the Theophas d'Or house, the two maples that were close to the sidewalk in front of the Engle Bot House, I raked a lot of leaves as a kid on those. But that view's gone. Stand down by the end of Third and Merchant and look up the street now, it's not the view that we had ten years ago. I agree, trees have a life. You have to, they're going to come down, they're like all of us, they live and they die, and sometimes they get, like where they have to be removed, it takes maintenance. And it, as Frank said, you can't wait to the end to do the maintenance. I mean, that's why we go to the doctors now, it's why we try to exercise, that sort of thing, so that we can live longer. I think the important thing is we're going to have to take another look at the downtown. Some of those spots where we had trees are extremely small, I mean, a space two by two, hard to have a tree keep alive in that. Perhaps there are some places where we put trees in existing places. We need to encourage the Citizens Electric and the other people that have yards, like the post office, I think it was the master gardener's, planted two trees in there about four or five years ago, look at them now, and in a couple of years, they're going to be really looking nice down there. We need to encourage our citizens where there's space, plant trees. And we need to help them, too. We need to tell them what kind of trees will work for Citizens Electric, where they don't get into the old sewer tiles with their, with their roots. But they're, we're not the only city that's faced this problem. There's experts out there. And if we can use, do that, we can put more trees in there without the problem of tearing up the sidewalks, and we should do that. There are some trees that I know we're trying to, to use, some species, we need to see how those do. But perhaps in some of those areas that are small, maybe we do something different. Maybe we put a concrete planter in there, and we plant the town flower, lilies, or something like that, or a bush, or things like good St. Genevieve boxwood. Those are the kind of things that make a town look attractive, it makes it look inviting, and it makes it, as Yvonne said, cooler, and it's a great place to live. It's like the guy, the commercial with the salsa, when he was talking about New York City, well, I don't want to live in New York City. I've been there, there aren't any trees except in Central Park. So, I really encourage you to deal with the problem trees, look for solutions, some alternative approaches to doing the streetscape. Streetscape is important to us as a community, the people that live here, and the people that come here. Thank you.
Anybody else? I was in Perrigo last week, and I'll pass these pictures around. And I was, I was visiting a business on their square, and Martin made me fill, fill in a little bit more of what their plan was. I think they're, from according to this businessman, they're going through the dilemma right now of, one thing that Martin brought up was some of the owners there were complaining about the trees taking up too much space and covering up too much of the front or side of the building. You'll notice by those pictures, and I even put my tablet in front of one of them, the eleven way, that picture with that piece of paper in front of it, so you see that, that tree is like fourteen inches in diameter probably, and you can see their sidewalks are just, their sidewalks are fine, they're all pavers, and there's not a thing raised in any of their sidewalks. I'm not sure how long their sidewalks have been in existence, but I know we talked to one engineer about it, and Martin's talked to the city administrator as far as what they did, but Perrigo's talking about the dilemma that their trees are too big now, and they're taking them out, I mean, there's some of them that are pretty big, but they're taking them out for the other reason of, that they're cut, that they're covering up too much of the storefront, not that they've got a problem with their sidewalk. So, I, I don't know, as far as an alternative way of planning it, I think they figured it out, I, and I don't know if you know what they...
Yeah, they haven't figured it out.
Huh?
I was reported from the city administrator that they really haven't figured it out.
They're just lucky?
That, that... They're going through the same discussion. Now, what they, what they have is better soils, and the opportunity in most of these places to build a bigger root zone and infil- infiltration zone, which, you know, we can't do because some of the places where we have trees, we don't have that much sidewalk. So, you've got a two by two hole, but you have to have two by two because you've got to have three feet for ADA access between the building and, and tree, or the building and the roof zone. They also have a species that is problematic, they have Bartlett pears, which are considered invasive species now in the state of Missouri, and so, and they split, and they have, the wind blows them over, and they've got, they've got tree problems, but they are certainly, as far as the sidewalks around the trees, in better condition for a variety of reasons.
I will say that, I did measure the, the area, the wells that they're in, were five foot by five foot, so...
They have a, a committee, they've invited some qualified people to sit on that committee, and they're currently trying to formulate a plan that, that works for Perrigo, notwithstanding the fact they aren't having a sidewalk problem.
They might have, I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody over there, but they might have used a technique called structural soil, and it's actually, the root zone will go underneath the sidewalk, it's using different grades of material, starting at peak, starting at the bottom with big coarse material and working your way up to fine material.
Right.
And it allows the roots to expand through the rock and not...
And I call it overexcavating, but you have to excavate a big enough hole to...
Exactly.
To construct all of that.
Yeah, it'd be a lot of work, but if you had a high value spot, it could be worth it, I don't know.
I think that's the approach, and I, I don't know if anybody pulled what we did on Main Street, but we...
We looked, we looked.
We looked, we didn't, we did, if anyone thought, you remember? That structure of, there was rock involved, and how the hole was actually dug was supposed to control the direction of the roots on Main Street. They're gone, but we've seen those issues there.
Mr. Mayor, this seems to me like a reasonably simple issue, not nearly as complex as, as I think that we discuss it into. We didn't get to the situation we're in now, last month. This has been overtimed because of a lack of maintenance. I really think that's the key as well. And maybe we didn't have the education to make good maintenance decisions on the trees. I don't know a thing about trees, and frankly, I don't care to know too much about trees. If I wanted to plant a tree, I would find several authoritative resources and follow their advice on what type of tree to plant. I think it's very important that we protect the aesthetic value that the trees bring to the downtown area, and the effects, like several people have spoken about today, of tourists and, and shade spots and cool spots. It sounds like there, that we need a mix. If we have trees in bad spots, we need to take trees out. But can we replace that, that unit for unit with a, a planter or something else that will bring some aesthetic value to downtown? To, I'm still confused, Mr. Toma, that you, you've made some comments that seem to go together and then contradict, and then, I don't know how to, the explanation that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk, doesn't that, wouldn't that automatically give the property owner the decision on whether or not they want a tree on their sidewalk? I mean, that's, it seems to me like that would be, if we say that the property owner...
Property owner is responsible for what occurs on their property, whether there is a sidewalk there or not.
So, if the sidewalk is their property, how can the city determine, we're going to go cut this tree down, or we're going to go and put a tree in?
Our trees may or may not be on the property owner's property.
I understand, I understand that, but if it's on the property owner's property, how do we determine?
Whether the property, whether the sidewalk is on private property or public property, the city has a responsibility to maintain its pedestrian ways, and keep them, there's a public safety issue.
So, that contradicts that the...
No, it's a double responsibility.
Well, no, I, I think you just contradicted what my point is. You said that this, the homeowner has the, the onus is on the homeowner and the city, but really it's on the homeowner because the city's not going to do it unless the homeowner's going to help pay for it.
The home, if the city doesn't do it, and somebody were to be injured, they could hold the homeowner responsible if it was on their property, without regard to what the city did.
Okay.
It's, if the city has some responsibility for that sidewalk, as that has been suggested for the downtown area, they can also look to the, the city for, for satisfaction.
I, I'm not focusing on the legal liability of an injury that occurs based on the sidewalk. My question is, we need to keep the trees, we need to do the right thing, we need to get the right kind of trees, we need to have a, a well-thought-out, educated maintenance program to take care of the trees in the downtown area. But I'm still, maybe it's just me and everybody else is clear on this. The homeowner has a responsibility to maintain the sidewalk, and the city has some responsibilities... a responsibility to maintain the sidewalk, and the city has some responsibilities as well, it's a shared responsibility. If you want to put a sidewalk in front of my house, and you want to put a tree in it, who gets to decide if it gets a tree or not? Me, it's on my property, or you, it's, so then, so then, wouldn't-
Herefore, it has been, I don't know where those property corners are, the city has made that decision in the past. But maybe as a property owner could say, "I'm sorry, city, I know you'd like to put it here, but I don't want a tree in it."
I mean, I'm focusing there because of, if there was a business owner that had a big tree and they didn't want the big tree, I understand that. And I can see the next-door neighbor, business owner wishing there was a big tree in front of their property, because it would create shade and get people to, you know, spend more time on their end of the street. But the wishy-washy who's responsible, in my mind, is wishy-washy. I think you've explained it well, but I still don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that I understand. Who has the authority to decide if this tree stays or goes, it sounds to me like it depends on whose property it's on.
I think that's, that is correct.
So a business owner may say, "You're not taking my tree. You can't cut it down," or a homeowner, anybody, any property owner. But the city can say, "Yeah, yes, we are." I think that, I think that we're gonna end up into that debate at some point, and we're gonna have to either check with council or figure out what the answer to that is. I think it's gonna be important. I just don't think that under good conscience, anybody at this table should even consider just taking the trees down. I think that's not a good idea.
If I can maybe confuse this a little bit more. I know, like Main Street, as well as I'm sure the plan in 1985, you know, it was an overall plan, and so an architect or landscaper designed the whole downtown area, and it was presented to, obviously, all the owners on the street and everybody. I know businesses I own down there, I think we own two feet of the sidewalk, and if I remember correctly, on Main, when in Main Street, the properties, they go out into the sidewalk, but, because we had to get easements from all of the people on Main Street to be able to put the sidewalks in. So that property line is somewhere on that sidewalk. Now, I don't know if that, did you get-
Well, it does, but it just, it seems like the message-
But I think the plan was, you know, here's the whole plan of the street, here's where all the trees were gonna go, and everybody at that time said, "Okay, that's fine." And I think if anybody had any objections at that time, is whoever owned those buildings is, "No, I don't want the tree there," or "Yes, I do want the tree there," and then the whole plan was adopted, and it went that way.
It just seems like we're given a couple of different messages. One message is, as a property owner, you are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep on your sidewalk, but as a city, we're gonna decide whether or not if we're gonna put a tree in the middle of your sidewalk.
And I don't know, maybe the downtown may be a little more unique than the residential.
So as a, I don't, have you intentions of forming a committee?
I have intentions of doing whatever the board directs.
Well, I mean, I personally think that we need to form a committee to look at the streetscape downtown, and you're gonna have to look at it and say, where are trees gonna fit, where, can we encourage, like Bob Mueller said, that encourage property owners that we can plant trees, but you're gonna have some kind of a plan. And I would think that's the next step, is forming a committee, having a plan of what the streetscape's gonna look like downtown. But you just can't get rid of the trees, and you just can't put a tree every two foot. There's gonna be a plan.
I will tell you, a year and a half ago, I was asked this question, and I went to the extension service, and they got kind of, well, there really aren't correct answers to that problem. This year that it's come up, there are a lot more people who want to help us address the issue than before. Thank you very much. So maybe we'll get more, better educated information than we had the last time we looked at it. But, you know, when Dave's here, because I asked him to attend, it's a financial issue, certainly. I mean, we take a tree out and replace it, and have to repair the sidewalk, and usually if we have to create a root zone that's got structured soils in it, you know, it's $1,500 a tree. And it's gotta, but again, I don't, you can't know that until somebody says, "This tree at this location with this kind of planting system," and that's what we have to do.
I hate to drag this issue out, but maybe it will be, maybe it would be a very good idea to try to put a well-informed, get a committee of people that are passionate about the subject, and allow them to come up with some proposals that we could evaluate.
I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
I think public safety at this point is our main concern. I mean, whether or not we replace them or not, the way those sidewalks are at this time.
We're gonna proceed with the ones we discussed at our last meeting, I mean, that's done. But beyond that, we still have-
Right.
Twenty trees-
It would just be really nice to have a resolution to this issue, that, so in six years, or I think maybe two years, we don't come back here again and have done nothing.
If you're gonna do it now's the time, because you need to get it done in the next sixty days, so we can have something before you when it comes time to look at the budget.
Yeah, I would, I would pose that as one idea.
Anybody on the board interested in being on that? Donnie, you kind of got a interest in, would you like to?
I'm kind of a conflict interest though.
Well-
When you get talking about the church, I'm sure the church wasn't very happy when they put the trees in there by the rectory there, because they lost parking. Well, like Mr. Tomah said, if they don't want a tree there, I don't think we should force the issue.
I'd be happy to be on that.
I would be on that.
Okay.
Katie from the extension service has said that they have a-
Would you mind being on? Would you, Thomas? Well, I forgot your name.
Tom? Yeah, I'm somewhat of a conflict interest though, too, but, you know, I can-
Well, I don't think that this committee would have the power to decide anything, other than to collect proper information, to be a good source of information, to say, "This is the best varieties of trees, you've gotta have this soil," this, that sort of thing.
I'm willing to chip in.
So, University Extension Service has a urban forester who is not here, is that on, is he here?
No, I don't think so.
But anyway, she talked to him today, and he's willing to attend.
I think we should add some business owners on that committee also.
I know we're on the clock.
Is there anybody out here that would like to be on?
That?
Would you like to be on that committee?
I've got a different, different argument, you know, not the landscape, the aesthetics or whatever. I'm looking at a lot of property damage. It gives a lot that much-
Well, this issue's gonna be addressed, it's part of what we're doing. This issue will be addressed by the authority you gave me last meeting.
Frank, I know you've done a lot, obviously, a lot of study on this at the beginning, twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago.
Yes, I'd like to sit on it. I don't, when it comes to the trees, I have no great expertise, I know the effects, if you make a bad decision.
Learning about trees is the last thing I want to learn about, but I think it's important that we take ownership and aggressively pursue the resolution of this.
Okay.
We have a start.
Go ahead, start. All right, thank you, and thank all of you for coming and your input. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Just a minute break for Pam, just for a second, let everybody clear out of here.
A resolution to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, please, Pam.
Mayor Grimminger.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderwoman Zerwig.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Joe Kirst.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Openfus.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Birnfield.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Approval agenda?
The motion.
Thanks. Okay, I guess I'll go right into the city administrators' report.
Okay. If those of you who've been wandering around town have observed, the signs are up. I don't want to steal Alderman Ross's thunder from his committee report, but, uh...
You do have your...
I do, don't I? They are, they are up. We've received nothing but compliments so far on them, except for, uh, one of our employees thinks they're too high. But that was, that seven-foot clearance was required by the state because you have to be able to safely walk under the signs. And, um, I think they stand out pretty well. Uh, we will be meeting a week from next Monday to discuss, now that we have these up, which of the signs that they're replacing can come down. Spoke to the school superintendent, and she had no strong opinions about it, although she asked me to advise her what we were going to do. And, uh, I think we need to talk about the ferry signs and the, you know, the ones where there are duplications. There are some signs that are hardly legible that will come down just because they needed to come down. Uh, I think Dave's already started on one of those, and there's another one I haven't told him about yet. Probably knows. Mayor, I reported to you that we got bids on redoing this, this is the St. Genevieve website that were beyond anything we could budget. Since then, we've received another couple of inquiries that are, or I think companies that appear to do good work, based on Stephanie's review and mine, and we're in conversation with them, and they've made proposals that are more in line with what we had anticipated. So, uh, we're continuing to pursue those options and hopefully we'll have a resolution, uh, soon. Uh, they finished the Safe routes to school project. Uh, the, um... Market Street drainage project is done as it relates to Market Street. Uh, we're still having some issues down Ms. Ross's drainage area next to, she went... We're taking out the old pipe that you approved at last meeting and, uh, in the process discovered some things, you know, every time you dig a hole, you find something, uh, that, that, that weren't planned or understood, and we're having to address those today, but, uh, it's gonna get finished. It's just a question of taking care of the things you find when you dig a hole. Uh, we recorded the Porter Street easements. The bids will be, uh, they're being advertised now. Uh, the bid date is June the 6th, uh, so we would, you know, hope to have, uh, the, um, bids before you for two readings in June to, to begin construction in July. Still haven't heard anything definitive from the Corps of Engineers, although I'm still corresponding with them. Today, we held our, our third, I guess, comprehensive plan steering committee. This says second. Um, and, and we'll probably have one more quick one, uh, to finalize the survey and focus groups, uh, in, in a week from next Tuesday. Um, the, um... Okay, we're continuing our discussion with, uh, the, the, well, we're not discussing with the Arch Thieves. I indicated to you that the Arch Thieves was willing to cooperate on the road and, and trail easement. Uh, last week, we met with, uh, Tim Baer, the engineer, to find out whether it's physically possible to construct the road in the area where it was considered most desirable. Uh, and he's, it, it, the only, you know, major issue that was identified was whether you have adequate sight distance when you get up to Progress Park Drive because of the coming into kind of a hill. So, that has to be evaluated with a surveying instrument level and shoot some, some grades. Uh, but he's, he's doing that, and we'll, should have a, an answer soon on that. Uh, that concludes my report. Any questions?
You said those down on Market Street, as far as the sidewalks and all that?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
KCs still aren't happy with the front entrance there by the driveway to the hall.
Yeah.
It's like eighteen foot that's busted up there.
Some of that has grass growing out of it.
Well, I'm not saying that's...
Second.
Some of it's not for maybe beer trucks, but eighteen foot there, that's... I think the lady in the crowd there watched them run over it and bust it, but...
Well, but the point I'm making is that I can't, I can maybe hold the contractor responsible for some portion of the damage, but he can't just repair part of it. Would the, would, would the KCs want to participate with the contractor?
Sure. I mean, it needs to be fixed.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay. Any committee, or, oh, I'm sorry, staff reports, uh, Steve Terry?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Uh, Steve couldn't be here today with his death and their family, and so, uh, he needed to leave this afternoon, so I'm filling in. I believe you all should have a copy of his report in front of you. I will answer any questions that you might have, uh, on practically any copy you might have. Is there any questions with his report? Please. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Stephanie?
Hello.
Thank you. I have, uh, quite a bit of information in the packet in front of you. And a good part of that is, uh, we had the public tourism advisory meeting, and I wanted to include all of that information in with your report as well, so you could see, um, just the health and what's, what's been going on with tourism. Um, as far as the grant, fiscal year thirteen, uh, Q3 reimbursement will be rolling in next week. Uh, our visitors and our passports, passports began, uh, went on sale April 1st, and they are down. Um, but the, where, when I looked at where the biggest drop was, it was on the student groups. They're not purchasing the passports anymore. They're only coming in and going to one house. Um, we are still, year-to-date, down from individual visitors from last year, but it has greatly improved. Uh, we're only down five percent now. Now that we're in May, it's been beautiful. Um, we're hoping that trend of catching up and hopefully bringing in more people will occur. Um, on a budget report, there are no differences in the expenses, and a slight decrease in the sales year-over-year. Uh, web report, continuing the trend of the sharp increase in visitors over 2012. Um, year-to-date, we're up one hundred and seven percent. Last year, we were up ninety percent over prior years. So, it has more than doubled traffic, and that would be mostly our advertising that has doubled traffic. Uh, in the PowerPoint, which you have, um, connected, we have several different, um, graphs to show where we are going and how we are doing as far as with visitors, uh, passport sales. One thing in particular I'd really like to point out is, is the tax revenue that has been generated. Uh, the state has a tourism tax formula that they use to, uh, measure the health of tourism year-over-year. And that, as we've discussed before, um, I'll have an explanation for that, Carl. Uh, but it, it takes into account the eating establishments and the lodging establishments, and we have seen a definite growth year-over-year since 2010. 2010 showed a big drop. Um, but starting in 2011, it increased. 2012, and we're continuing to, to have that trend. For example, the lodging tax, uh, we only have information through December of 2012. It was up over five percent from the prior year. Um, when we look at a sample of the downtown restaurants specifically, uh, we had an increase, and here I need to make a correction. It reflects an increase of five point six percent. That's five point six percent over 2011. Uh, the increase for, from 2012 is two point three percent. On the merchant sales tax, um, these are downtown merchants that we have. They're showing an increase of over fifteen percent from last year in, in total sales. Now, when you compare this to our general sales tax revenue overall, it has only increased two percent. So, there are places in the general revenue where that local income is, is dropping, but we have a strong growth and a strong response in the tourism-related industries that's showing that the investment that has been made is working. Um, and continued investment will continue to help, uh, improve. Um, and also in there, and this is Carl, kind of what you were looking at, uh, the strategy behind media and choosing medias is, is changing, and a lot of it has to do with digital and, um, social media, people looking online, advertising online. It has always, it is, up to this point, has been kind of treated as a separate entity from an overall marketing scheme, before it was mainly looking at print advertising, radio advertising, and, uh, television advertising. And then there's this whole social media and online thing. Well, it's now being looked at as how do we incorporate all of our media in such a way, have it broken down by paid media, owned media, earned media, and social media. And that way, we're working the entire, all of those types of medias together so that they become converged, in that the paid media reflects back to the owned media and to the social media and to the earned media, and so forth with each one. So that way, they're all intertwined, and it's, it's a comprehensive, well-thought-out plan that takes all of these into consideration. And, uh, we're on a really good path to do that. In the print media, uh, paid media, I have a, a selection of some of our print media that we have done recently. Uh, online paid media, we have a destination spotlight that is on four of AAA's websites. Uh, with the $10,000 grant that was provided from the Community Development Foundation for Economic Development, that was used to, uh, purchase NPR advertising. And then the $2,000 that was provided for marketing by the Zertifect Committee, I also put that into NPR. So, we have a $7,000 investment in St. Louis, $2,500 in Cape Farmington, and $2,500 in Carbondale. And I'm really hoping that by hitting these markets that are within an hour to two-hour drive, that that's gonna help bolster, bolster, um, you know, the awareness and visitorship. Owned media, that's our website, our visitors guide. Um, you know, we're, with the growth and seeing hits to the website, especially from mobile users, um, one of the things that we're really focusing on with the new site is that it will be something that regardless if you're pulling it up with your phone, or if you're pulling it up with a tablet, or if you're pulling it up with a computer, it's gonna come up and it's gonna be a size that's going to fit that device. Uh, earned media, really excited. We have some new earned media, and I have these, uh, two of them included. One of them was in the Webster Kirkwood Times, um, and it's just a really nice breakdown, talking about driving down I-55, nice little area, a good amount of information for the city of St. Genevieve. And then the next was, uh, AAA Southern Traveler did an unexpected treasure regarding, uh, St. Genevieve and, and the French colonial heritage that we have. That's very exciting, um, to have gotten that. It's, it was picked up, didn't cost us a dime. Earned media, um, another earned media that we have recently, and this is what I'm really excited about. Uh, I have been working with Randolph County Department of Economic Development and the Corps of Engineer down at Cascaskia River Project for about the past year on a driving route that incorporates French colonial, um, historical on the Missouri and the Illinois side, utilizing the ferry and the Chester Bridge, and it's a driving route that goes both sides. And I've got maps that I'll, I'll send you copies with. While we were, while we've been talking about how we were going to market this, Randolph County was mentioning that they have television commercials that they were planning to have, as a part of a new campaign they were doing. And I was like, you know, it'd be a really good idea if, you know, why don't you do one of the commercials on this auto route, come in and, and do some filming of St. Genevieve? And they thought about it, and they said, okay. So, they, we had, a week ago Monday, we had Charter Cable Film Crew in town, and they did some filming of, of various areas in town, and I have the ad that I'm gonna show you here in just a minute. That's why I brought my computer up, and that's why it's, uh, that big black square on the page. But it's very exciting. It does talk a lot about St. Genevieve. It does promote Randolph County. They are the ones who paid for it. Um, and the total investment is $6,500 for them at this point. And this one, it really shows nicely for St. Jen. Make sure that doesn't fall. Put it at the end. I think I have it up pretty loud. But I also put this on our Facebook, and I've also been given permission for Dan to run it on Channel 798.
Where the Cascaskia and Mississippi rivers come together, you'll find the Confluence Heritage Area in St. Genevieve and Perry Counties in Missouri and Randolph County in Illinois. This area is rich with history, natural beauty that can easily be viewed on one of our motor trails. Take your pick from the Rue de Vin in St. Jen, the Confluence Heritage Trail at the Cascaskia Lock and Dam, and the forts of Prairie du Rocher and Cascaskia. Take a weekend drive on one of the trails and view some of the most beautiful scenery around. We assure you, it's a weekend you'll never forget.
So, in addition to, and I just discovered this today, um, they had four other commercials made. They have got St. Genevieve in all of their other four commercials. They don't mention the name, but the video that they took, it, it's in all of their commercials, so that's kind of an added bonus. So...
You can see, you can see the names somewhere in those commercials, or just the shootscapes, or what?
I have to go back and watch. I know the shootscape. Uh, I know Ellie Douglas is in one in Felix Valley House, and she's, you know, doing something at one of the tables. Um, I have to go back and see. I think it's mainly shootscapes, though.
So, it doesn't say where they're at, it just...
Not necessarily, but this one, I always, it does, and it's, it's...
Yeah, that's, that's pretty neat.
Yeah, I was, I am very excited about this particular. I'll get that in a second. And then finally, our social media. Um, we have gotten with, um, the hiring of Megan. She has been absolutely fantastic. She's made a huge difference for me, and we've been working really hard on getting back up to speed with the social media. So, we're paying more attention to the Facebook, and, um, we're really working on Pinterest. And with some of the recent travel conventions, meetings that I've gone to, um, we've had some excellent marketing people, professionals, telling us, you know, how to best utilize these so that they go back to the paid media, that they go back to the, uh, owned media and the earned media, and it becomes converged. And Pinterest is one example. You click on any of our photos, it'll take you to our visitstjen.com website. And Facebook, first thing you see is our, our website that connects you back to it. Twitter, um, is a little bit of a different animal. It's not like a Facebook or a Pinterest. So, we try to use that more as a promotion or to shout out to the Visit Mo people to see if they'll share, we have an event coming up. So, it's kind of more of a, a network with our tourism partners throughout the state and even over on the Illinois side. And so, it's, it's, it's a very exciting time, I think, in marketing, um, to see how things are going and the different, and trying to find ways to incorporate and crossover and have that cross-pollination. And I think we're in a really good position, um, right now, and I think we're gonna continue to be in a really good position, as long as we continue to invest and promote and, um, show that this is, you know, this is one area that we have no limits. We can go, you know, we can bring in as many people as we want, and they can spend as much money as they want. As opposed to, if you're looking at, say, real estate taxes, that's a fixed amount that you could put up as increasing taxes, but most people probably wouldn't like that. Uh, the tax-generated revenue from tourism makes a big difference. You can see it now. Um, if we didn't have this big growth, we probably wouldn't, we would not, I know we would not be where we are for collection this year. And so, does anybody have any questions?
Stephanie, what, uh, I don't know anything about what media costs. But like an app, uh, Visit St. Jen app, where people would get here and they could hit their app and see all the... Is that, what kind of, I mean, investment is that?
For one single platform, it starts at $20,000, and that's very very...
That's fine.
Okay.
Gives you an idea.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. Wow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Was there anything that come about that? That line on Main and Merchant by the stop sign, so people would stop? Dave, the line on Merchant Street?
Pedestrian crossing.
Not, not so much a pedestrian crossing, just a line to make sure that they stop at the stop sign, because people are running to that stop sign.
Okay, uh, Martin talked to me about, uh, making the crosswalks down there, and I've got with the chief, and he gave me that description he had again about making a, like, square in the middle of the intersection. Uh, the only thing is, we can't figure out how, because according to that paper, it's really wide. So, we're trying to figure out how wide that's supposed to be, so... But then, that'll be a crosswalk all the, basically all the way across there then, and stop, so... We was talking about, uh, Main and Market.
This started back before your attempt at sealing, because we were...
Yeah, yeah, we had to wait for that, yeah.
And decided to wait, and that was in the microseal.
Oh, okay.
And the, the handicap ramps, curb ramps don't line up.
Well, they're in a no parking zone right there.
Well, but you can't put the pedestrian crossing across, uh, front of Station 2, because when you get there, the handicap access is around the corner. So, the chief came up with this plan he saw where you kind of put the square in the middle and put the, the, the outside line, so it doesn't direct people right to the vertical curb. And, uh, it, it addresses the issue, and that's what we plan to do. But we need to put the pedestrian crossing back in.
That's at all three, that's at Washington, or, I mean, Jefferson and Washington and Merchant and Market, all of them.
Yeah, wherever those don't line up. Otherwise, you can just do the straight line crossing.
I heard you talk about Market Street a while ago. We're gonna be hauling dirt for them tomorrow for that, you know, where they're removing that pipe, so... I explained to him the dirt we had, we had a little rock and stuff in it, but, you know...
Well, they're gonna put topsoil in it.
They're gonna put topsoil.
They need something that'll compact.
Yeah.
So, it won't settle out.
What we have will, it'll do that, so...
Just put topsoil in there, and you're gonna get assed out with it.
Yeah. Heard, Mayor, heard you talk about doing that here in front of City Hall. Uh, that was a question I had for the board, is I'd like to start doing some patching there now that school's out. But we're gonna disrupt a lot of traffic, because we're gonna have to have that lane closed for probably a couple of days, because by the time we dig it out and get the concrete put back in it the next day, so...
Where are you talking at?
Uh, like, well, up here in front, out here, then all the way from, uh, the railroad tracks up, as bad as it is, because we don't do anything, you know, for too long, it, it's really gonna be tore up. I mean, it's bad enough now, but it's, it's not bad enough where I can put asphalt in, where asphalt is stiff. So, we almost need to dig all that out.
It's almost ripply.
If you, if you dig it out and put asphalt in, you could almost drive all right, right away versus the concrete, though, right?
Yes, so...
So, in that case, should we look at?
Asphalt.
An asphalt patch instead of a concrete pad?
Yes. But the thing is that I'll dig it out one day, because I don't have the manpower to, you know, with four people to send two people after asphalt and two people dig it out, so... But if we could leave it open for a day and dig it up where we can, you know, justify getting two loads, but then like right now, as long as it's, you know, like today, cool, it'd be hard for us to shovel, you know, two loads off and without it getting hard on us. You sure we gotta drive all the way to Elwens to get it, so by the time it gets back, it's cooled down quite a bit.
Are you, are you saying you need to close, close the street completely down?
Half of it.
Half of it.
There'll be one lane.
Could you detour traffic right here?
But actually, if I could dig it out and put the concrete in it, I could use this, this high early, and it'll set up in 24 hours. We did that quite a bit already, so...
What's your suggestion?
I think the concrete would be better. Consider by the time we dig it down and we put, uh, rock in it as base, compact it, go over to Elwens and get the asphalt where the concrete is real comparable. Uh, I got two summer help now, uh, Vince Wilk and Brandon Weiner. Uh, seem like they're doing pretty good so far, so... First, I told them to watch traffic, so we haven't got any cars hit yet, so that's a good thing. Uh, we're gonna start fogging in the first week of June, fogging for mosquitoes, so, in case anybody asks you. They're starting to bite.
Bad, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they got quite a bit of my blood the other night. I'd like to ask the board permission to, uh, put Bruce back on the sweeper. With John being the only one allowed to operate the sweeper, and he's part-time now, that, that pretty well, I need, uh, I think Bruce could, uh, you know, he's did it before, and he went to training, and I'd like to put him back on the sweeper to, whenever John's not available. Because especially with the ball season starting and... especially with the fall season starting and, you know, with the grass mowing, you know, mowing like crazy, so.
Why, why is that a decision the board has to make?
Yeah, that's your call.
I just need an answer for tomorrow, because I need him on the sweeper tomorrow.
Let's go.
When we purchased the sweeper, there was concern expressed by the board about having qualified individuals operated in kind of a sole responsibility, John had been informed of his, of his plans then, so he's kind of the one we designated as being the sweeper operator. But now that he, his condition has changed and he's part-time, I can kind of see point, we just want to make sure whoever's on it is attentive to what they're doing. That's right.
Anything else for Dave?
I got a general question. What, and I'm sure that many of you already know the answer to this, is just coming on a month ago, I'm not aware of it. What's going on with the swimming pool, dirt? There's, there's several feet of dirt over the top of the swimming pool, we got a building that's halfway tore down, it just looks...
Yeah, it does look bad. The dirt came from the jail construction, and it was given to us and the hauling was free.
That's a good thing.
We were, so we, we broke out the bottom of the pool area, and we filled the pool, but we have more dirt than we could accommodate, so it's just being stored right now. On the building demolition, you know, we didn't really, we got bids on the demolition, and it was beyond our financial means at the time, but kids were climbing over those outer walls and kind of using that area for nefarious purposes. So Dave asked for permission to just remove the brick on those, that sunning, sunning area. As far as disposing of the material, we were going to take it to a sinkhole.
Yes.
And that's still the plan.
So what's the timeframe on making it look better than it looks today? I mean, is it a budget issue, is it, is it just we don't have the time, manpower to get to it, or a combination?
Right now, the reason why we left that big pile of dirt is for once the building's gone, then we can level it all out. Yeah, budget, we need money to...
Moving the building is just a budget item.
Because we got a backhoe that we can't knock the building down, load it up in our dump trucks and haul it away?
There's a roof on it.
I'm not being, I'm asking an honest question, is that something that...
That roof that's on there...
The contractor would bring a backhoe in and do what?
Well, they'd probably bring a big, big loader, because like I say, with a backhoe, we wouldn't be able to get that roof off there. And then, you know, I think we checked on how many dumpsters it would take to, you know, to haul that off, and it was astronomical. I think the bid was, what, $26,000 or something like that for...
So...
Well, we can discuss it when we create next year's budget to, to budget removal, if we think we have the resources to do it.
So it's just going to stay like that?
Well, the breaking in, in...
You can haul the brick, it's torn down, you can haul out...
Actually, there was a guy asked, we can go if he can have it, and I told him to take all he wanted, so.
Or jill.
But like I said, we run into the problem too, is we gotta go through this guy's yard and dump it, and he don't want us driving through his yard when it's bad. And right now, you know, it's, we're mowing, you know, like, so yeah, we're kind of...
But July, it'll be dry.
Yeah, now, let's hope it's real dry, and we don't have to mow.
Boilings cut down, it'll...
I've had more than one person ask me about it, and I didn't know the answer.
Rightfully so, I, I, every time I drive up there to go to a park or meeting or any other purpose, I look at it.
But they was jumping over there like, like Martin said, and doing all kinds of stuff they wasn't supposed to be doing, so.
Gotcha.
Anything else?
Y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, Dave.
I have to report to the fire department there. Any questions for Eric? Okay, any committee reports?
In two weeks, the Chamber's Summer Conference Series starts, and we want to encourage everybody to participate, it's a really unique opportunity to bring some music that we don't normally have here throughout the year in St. Genevieve, and they are planning their Fall Golf fundraiser, and a date has yet to be decided.
Okay, thank you. Dave, you want to talk about signs?
I would say I agree with him.
All right, then you take it, David?
Yes.
No wonder, I, the only comment I had, I'd say, was maybe next year, if there's any available money, maybe we take it another step to identifying maybe other, maybe other things that we didn't on that one. I mean, I know you looked at a lot of things, and you've got Ferry and Historic Homes or Historic District and Welcome Center, High School, I was just thinking, you know, maybe get, when you get to some of those, like, maybe just a single sign that says this in that same format, that would go that direction, and I, you know, maybe, maybe define it, go down, if we got money available to do that, take it down, like to the park, I don't know, we got it in the park?
Yeah, but, for instance, we take you that way to the school, and you get to La Camp, the street turn up.
La Camp?
Yeah, the sign that's up there is one of the ones the school put up, and you're looking for black and white, and that's, you know, so that's, that's one where we thought we might put a directional sign just for the school.
I was just thinking, maybe, maybe the next step up, if, if we've got some money that we can even add to that collection and have it all look the same, if it's, if that's next year to say.
Anybody else?
Other than the football field, it'd be nice if they had that marked, but I guess that's the school's problem, you know, like Valley's football field, I had three or four when they would play also in Roser Dish, and where's football field at? He passed it up, you know? They had a sign there by Emerald that could help them.
I think that's been, always been confusion for a lot of different schools, they come here and then they're like, where's the football field?
Yeah, where's the field, because it's not part of the schools.
Well, I think, I think they look great, I think it's a great, great start, and especially when we eliminate some of them, like you're talking about, getting some of the clutter of all these different ones out, it's, it's, it's great if we can continue all of the process. It would be nice to, to end up taking that same envelope, because I've seen it in some towns, and maybe in the downtown area, take the street signs, the individual street signs, and have that on top of them, that would be in that same kind of format, would be nice to, some continuity within the, but hey, it's all money, it's just money. I'm sorry.
That's fine. We had a Muni Band Grant Committee meeting, and we had a couple of applications, and approved some funds for the St. Jen County Fair Board to help out with their musical endeavors for the county fair, as well as, I'm happy to announce, the Lagioni did get their application in, and we have approved their funds for the bus, so we'll be paying the bus direct for their endeavors on New Year's Eve.
So the last time we had a discussion about the band grants, we talked about how the community foundation, after you've gotten money, you have to kind of report back to them, that you show them that you spent it the way you intended to spend it? Is that, and we talked about maybe the band committee could ask the same thing of their grantee?
Yes, yes, and that should, that should be done, to, no, because it's earmarked for music, just like the Lagioni's app is right here in front of me, and they actually ask for funds for uniforms, I mean, we're not, this is for musical endeavors, it's really not for buying new uniforms. But they do, they always each year ask for funds for their bus so that they're safe when they perform, and they have filled out the proper application this time, and so that was awarded, and we will be paying for the, the bus that they'll be...
We'll be paying it directly.
To the bus company, yes, yes, so we know where that's going. And then, the grant, it always has to show the musical endeavors that are going to be going on, who, who the people are going to be, and then that money, it's never a full amount, it's a partial amount that was granted to the county fair board, and they're going to have music, I think, three different nights, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, so, so of course they'll be, we won't, we're not funding all of that, of course, but a portion of it. And then, of course, you always get a report at the end of the year showing exactly where everything went and who it went to.
So you only had two applications?
That's all we have, just one claim.
I think I'm lying, squalling?
Nope.
It's still open, all right.
Um, the next one will be July 1st.
Next meeting.
Okay. All right, so next one's July 1st.
All right, thank you.
Any else?
Go to the minutes of May the 9th.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Financial report for April.
Need approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, Old Business Bill Number 3923, second reading.
An ordinance approving change order number two, an amount of $5,473, and a final contract amount of $173,674 on the contract with CE Contracting Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the St. Genevieve Safe Routes to School Project.
Will approve, second.
Call please.
Alderman Couch.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had a discussion.
Was mistaken, drainage addressed, is it fixed now, or?
It's not fixed, I was laying the problem, it was a problem.
Channels are in, are they not draining?
They're not wide enough, and went on the driveway side, there's water that runs down the street, it drops, it drops into that, and then, then it's just more backup water standing in the ditch.
On the house side?
Driver's side.
Drivers?
Yeah, driveway side.
Is it something, a grading issue, it needs to be graded so that it drains properly?
Street's tired in the, in the property.
Street is tired. See, on the side by the, the house side, by the sidewalk side, when it gets to the street, it's, it's open where the water can drain, but it's not wide enough to drain as much water as collecting in the yard. Then you get over to the driveway side, and it's, the street is higher than the drain, so the water's coming down the street into, into the drain, and water's trying to force this way, but it's still not wide enough for this amount of water to come, and what it was doing the other night, going over the driveway and then down, because it's not draining.
Can I, can I come by tomorrow and you can walk me over?
Okay. So is this, is this, is this, is that still an issue or something?
Well, this, this doesn't relate to that.
Well, they put H channels in, it's not draining. I mean, what, what do you go from here to, let the engineer pay for the rest of the problem, or?
I need to go out and got to get a better, so I can pass on her concerns and then figure out what, what needs to be done, but yet the engineer has to sign up on it, because it's part of this reimbursable grant program in the state, so everything's got to go through him and, and the state.
Okay, but we can still do it.
You can do this.
We can still do this, we, we can still, if we have to do another change order, we'd have to do another change order.
Well, I'm not sure, we just need to work.
Yeah, right, right, right. But this isn't saying the thing's fine.
The contractor performed under the contract, but this change order doesn't relate to that, but this is the change order we'll propose six years.
It's got, it's got those in it, I don't think this is...
So, I, it's, we're, second reading, you approve it, we got it sent to the state, it's a, it takes a process to get, to get it back, and we'll, we'll need time to deal with it.
Okay, all right. So, roll call?
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Oakland Fuzz?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brinkfield?
Yes.
Eight, yes, zero, that is bill number 3923, now becomes ordinance 3864.
Okay, thank you. Really nothing under new business, going to public comments, anybody like to address the board?
I have a few things here. Okay, we addressed the drains just a few minutes ago, so we'll look at that. And also, Sunday, Jim, Casey Hall had a chicken fry and, and a car show over there, with a car show. Jim was out in his wheelchair, and we couldn't go, he couldn't go down the str, down the sidewalk to the, because of the drain, he couldn't go down the other side, the other because of the drain, so he had to drop off the driveway, which was no problem dropping off, Jim has a problem getting back on the driveway with the wheelchair, it won't go up over it. So, Sunday, a man riding a lawn mower, got off his lawn mower and put like three sticks there and two pieces of, of rock, so it could, so the wheelchair could go over the driveway.
So are you asking the city to like make that more of like a...
More like a, I don't know how that's going to be with the...
Like a smooth, like, so it's like a smooth transition?
With the drain, mhm, because it's too high of a lip for the wheelchair to go over there, but I don't know how it's going to interfere with the drainage there, too.
You'll show that to me as well?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, and also, after the car show, this, a couple weeks, a couple few weeks ago, I believe there was a car show there, everybody left that car show and very manly took concerns of citizens and being in that area. This past Sunday, the car show that left, the drivers that left squilled cars, speed up and down the street faster than the speed limit was. You had residents, you had kids playing and riding their bicycles. I think that we need to kick that in the butt, if there, if this group's going to have any more car shows across the street there on, at the KC.
Not KC, probably, it's St. Jen Car Club.
That's right, it's the car club. I mean, any other time, you can't speed up and down that street, any other time, you can't do smoke shows, you do, who gets a ticket?
We can, we can have that washed a little bit closer, next time there's a car show there.
Mhm, because they're, they're, they're getting by with just a little bit too much there. It's, needs to be, be taken care of right away. Now, I've also got a question about the city drain. My drains couldn't be put into the new system for the, that side, and you wanted all my downspouts where all of them would be going on the ground. I believe that the city's street department building has all of theirs running into the ground and into pipes, but at the same time, you've got a new cover in the front of that building to collect the water. the water. So now are we going to cut, or is the city going to cut your drains where it will drain onto the street or onto your sidewalk?
Clarify if I'm wrong, but we didn't disturb any of those in any of our digging, we didn't disturb any of them that happened to be in that particular building whenever we were digging anything up.
Is that from Ford, when Ford was there?
Well, they got to be draining somewhere.
Right, but I don't think we, I don't think we bothered that particular pipe that those drain into, just, but we did on.
Well, what did you do whenever you put the new drain in across the street there?
I think we just fixed that in, just a new inlet was all it was.
Just a new inlet?
There was no new pipe there, it was just taking care of it.
Okay, because, you know, I was, my understanding that was that, that the city doesn't want any of those pipes then, and drain it into the drains they have all want on top now.
No, the, the problem that we have is, is the cit, the, the downspouts can go into the storm sewer.
No, wait a minute.
Not in the sanitary sewer.
No, wait a minute. Whenever you guys did mine, someone gets, from the city, gave the order that mine could not be tapped into the new drain. When you come down there, you had your plans in your hand, and I was told, there's a structure there. There is a structure there that was connected to the old system. Now, I asked Mayor Grimmerger what city councilor gave the order that that's not to be tapped into the new system, to carry that water.
Do you think a city councilman gave an order to do something wrong with your drainage?
Well, you better ask Dave Pinkley, because he was standing right there. It was given an order not to, that the city has agreed that there is no tapping into that drain, the new one.
An alderman.
Mm-hmm.
Who was that?
I don't know, that's what I asked mayor, the mayor about, and that's why I'm asking city minister here back.
I, I don't remember you asking me that, what did I say? I, I, because I don't know any aldermen that said that.
I, I asked you, Dave Pinkley, and then was down there, whenever the discussion was about the drain on the driveway side. There, I told you and all of them that there was a big open area. Alderman John Stupi did too. I used to have to get down with the big long pole and clean that ditch out. And then it was a pipe underneath there that led into the new, the old system. And when I was asked about that old system, I told everyone that that pipe later ran into the old system to carry all the water on that, from the drainage.
So why is that?
Then Dave Pinkley tells me, whenever I asked, the guys was digging that area up, I asked, I said, okay, what about the drain here? He said that the city, we have a meeting every morning, the city does not want that drain to be tapped into new system. Dave Pinkley, I called you, but Dave Pinkley was sitting down there. Dave Pinkley said the same thing. The city had decided that we would not tap in to the new one.
Well, I'll have to talk to Dave, but we don't have a meeting every morning.
Do you believe, you believe that one alderman said no, that couldn't happen?
He said that the.
I'm asking, do you, is that what you think? Is that what you're telling us, that one alderman said that couldn't happen?
I'm telling you that they said that they have a meeting every morning at eight o'clock here, and Dave Pinkley said that the city has agreed not to tap in that drain into the new system.
I, that's news to me.
When, when I was down there, we had the sidewalk.
And you were the one that sent Dave Pinkley down there.
I, here's, here's what happened. You called me out there and said there used to be drains going into that old pipe, and I asked Dave, I said, would you monitor it since you're there every morning, and when they start to get there, see if they discover these drains that used to be there? And, and the contractor was instructed to, should he encounter anything like that, he was to call the engineer and seek permission to make that connection. He says he found no drains when he went through there.
He says he didn't find any, but the guy on the forklift, I told you this.
So if Dave was down there, it was to see, because if, if the drains were there. Now, I, I don't know, you know, one way or the other, when, when all that hap.
What happened to the structure on the blueprints?
The structure on the blueprints is that collection box.
Is what?
That collection box in, out front?
No.
Well, let me, I'll bring them down tomorrow and we'll.
No, no, we're going to sell it now. You said, when you brought the, brought the blueprints down there at the first beginning of all of it, you said there was a, a structure right there, it's on the blueprint, on the plan.
Is there, is there a new drainage inlet in front of your house, inlet, that box with the lid on it?
Yeah, I'm not talking about that one.
That's the structure I was referring to.
I'm not talking about that one. No, when you come down, that wasn't even discussed, discussed that, that big box. We were talking about the big square drain that's, like I said, was four foot or five foot deep that had a big drain at, at the end of it that went out into the old system, and it collected all the water from Jefferson Street, all the houses behind me, some of it, and it all went down into this drain, and it drained out into the old system.
I, I, that's not the structure I remember discussing with you.
Yes, it was. Then you came down the second time, and then we were talking about the other one.
I mean, I can, I can get the plans now if you like, we can look at them, and you can point to me what it is, the structure.
It's right there by the driveway. You said there was one there, and it's in the plans, that's what you said.
That's.
It's there and it's in the plans.
That's the drainage inlet that's there.
No.
Okay.
No, it isn't. No, that one was never discussed until, until a time later. The one that was at my driveway, John, you was there, you know.
There's one in front of Ricky Willamax, too, during when I used to walk through there every day.
Yeah, but remember the big one that dropped off the sidewalk, it's four or five foot deep, and, and you have to clean it out? And I asked the city.
It, it was the, on the old pipe?
Huh?
It was connected to the old?
To the old one. It's connected to the old one. And then when I asked about it being dug out again and, and for it to be put back, I was told by the guy that dig, that dug it, and it was on the back hole, and Dave Pinkley, that the city has decided not to tap into that.
I don't know where that came from, but I'll find out tomorrow. Was that Clifton that was on the back hole?
Yep.
Randy?
Yep.
Okay.
And I said, well, when I, when I asked him, he said, he said the city just decided not to tap into that. And I said, oh, they did. So I went in the house, I called City Hall, I asked for you, and Dave Pinkley was sitting down. And I, that's what they've said, that the city has decided there'll be no tap-ins.
I, I'm wondering if we're talking about two different kinds of tap-ins of what you're talking about, whether downspouts or whether it's that old structure that was there before that you maybe thought was going to be there that we never.
The old structure should have done, been dug out. They, the city filled it in 93 with the flood. When the flood came, 93, they came out and someone filled that, that drainage there with dirt. And I was told it was going to come out and open back up after the flood, and it wasn't. But I kept asking for a new grade to put on it, because the city come out one time, they cleaned it out, they took the old grade with them, because it had to be replaced, it never got replaced.
I, I, I don't know about that, no, obviously, the old one that was in there was collapsing and.
No, it wasn't.
Well.
It always carried the water down.
Okay, I mean, obviously, that whole system through there needed to be replaced, or we wouldn't have replaced it with, with doing what we had to do and putting a new sidewalk on it, because that was the whole idea, why put a new sidewalk on it, on something that was bad?
The new sidewalk wouldn't cover it all of it.
Well, I, I know that the plan from the beginning was, it didn't make any sense to use the grant money to put the new sidewalk on Market Street with that old drainage structure underneath of it, or close to it, when someday you're going to have to take it out of there because it was in bad shape, it was, it would have been not a good use of money. So that's why they were both done at the same time. Really, the drainage structure should have been done before the, the sidewalk, but anyway, it all worked out within the same basic amount of time.
And is the water backing up, Marcia? Is that what's happening? So how do we move forward?
Well, he's going to go there.
I mean, I need to go, kind of, be there and, and not call Gable, and they put those C channels in, and they were supposed to allow the water to pass through the sidewalk and not pond on, on her side of the sidewalk. And if it's ponding, it's not working the way it was supposed to work.
They're too small, they're not, they're not wide enough.
It's just not enough volume, is what you're thinking.
There's too much water and not enough to let it out. So it comes up over the driveway and, and down the driveway to the street, and the other one's open, but it's not open enough, it doesn't have a wider drain to drain the water. So it's, it's there till it drains.
So you're going to look at it tomorrow?
I am, see what we can. And we'll bring the lands with us on the structure.
Well, why? It's not going to be taken care of.
The structure issue?
No.
The drainage issue.
Well, I, I don't, they're not ready to, to conclude that. I mean, we should take care of it, it's just a question of how.
Seems like this certainly has been dragging on for a long time, I'd sort of like to see some resolution, get this homeowner and citizen taken care of to resolution as quickly as possible, as opposed to every two weeks, we go through this again. It would be really nice to try to help get this resolved to everyone's satisfaction.
Okay, other business? Or anybody else had any comments? Carl, come on.
I can't top her.
This is twice.
I just create, I just create some more problems.
That's, all right, we'll, we'll deal with these, then we'll, then we'll wait, we'll wait till the next meeting, okay?
I'll go over the whole top one, Ty.
All right. Okay, other business, we have temporary liquor license request from the American Legion.
Multiple.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed. We also have the annual liquor licenses, is it okay if we approve all of them together, or is it?
I mean, you do it all at once.
I have a question. Are there any different prices?
Some of them are Sunday only, some of them are packaged only, some of them are restaurants.
So there's like a reason, yeah.
Different.
Wine or beer?
Right.
Make the motion, we approve them all at one time.
Well, I thought I did that.
Sedona second.
Second, then, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. And we have one other request from the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal, the North Main Street between Jefferson and Washington, to close it for the French Festival on June the 8th.
Move through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Okay, anything else?
I heard you mention Sixth Street Sidewalk, well, another, that one that they replaced in the, in the French Festival.
We're going to replace the rest of it.
The rest of it's going to be taken care of.
He's had that taken care of, so that's why I asked them to put it even instead of.
Yeah, I know, that's a little bit of a new trip hazard.
Right, so he's going to replace the rest.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we've, there's nothing else, motion to adjourn, we do have a work session, short work session, I think, after this.
You adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, thank you for watching Channel 798.
Thank you for watching Channel 798.
Hi, thank you very much for watching Channel 798.